Boards. Not gonna recite everyone's name, we have a few items to give some feedback on before we formally. I get these ordinances underway, which are in U standards accessory dwelling units lighting ordinance update and. Sign ordinance, ordinance discussion, Alex has worked as point person on virtually. All of these over the course of the last several weeks. So Alex, I'll let you start with where you want to get input first, and then we can. Get into anything else, and also you know that I hope that we can wrap this around six. So we can kind of keep it late and keep things moving. So Alex.
Okay, Jacob, yeah, so the first time the agenda is ADU standards chosen because of its brevity compared to the other ones. ADU stands for accessory dwelling units, so what you have before you is what I'm terming a working draft. Up for deliberations by the community here. And what this is, is a, is a, is. I did a lot of research throughout the Commonwealth and looked at other municipalities that have this news called accessory dwelling use. And I combined the standards that make a lot of sense into this document here. And this documents is kind of in a draft form, it's in ordinance form, you know, as you can see the first paragraph kind of. It assumes that at some point this would be considered for adoption. But in reality, this is really just up for deliberation in, 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 in a way for the community to decide if this is the direction they'd like to pursue. In adding this definition and this use to your, your zoning ordinance, and so. Section one, other words is basically adding a new definition for this use, and I think. Hopefully, everyone's had a chance to read the definition, but I think the definition is kind of. Explains itself very well, I don't know if you want me to read the definition.
You don't have to read it.
Okay, no. Okay, and then basically after the definition, it gives standards for, you know, basically I've. Hypothetically in introduce this use into twenty seven five oh three, which is accessory buildings and uses. And then hypothetically, these number eight is because our current zoning ordinance goes up to number seven, and this would be adding number eight. If that's kind of why it's like that, so you know, and it starts with a specific intent. That thing intent is important because it clarifies the reason that the community would do this is to. Address the needs of extended families. And more specifically to seek a balance of the desires of extended families to provide a discreet residence for a family member with the need to protect the existing. Residential character of the surrounding neighborhood, and so in general regulations, the first. The second standard clarifies that the occupancy of the accessory. Unit or the principal one is limited to family members related by blood marriage or adoption in laws, one degree of. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
To the principal dwelling units owners or person or persons providing nursing or. Done so that that care of. Of assistance to the owner, so basically if there's. You know, some, it, that I think that's pretty self-explanatory, I think that's probably one of the main salient points of this. So it's specifically catering to extended families, and I don't know if you want me to go through all these, or if you want to. Cause I'm assuming here that everyone's kind of read this at least once. And what I really wanted to point out, unfortunately, in these copies, the color didn't come out, which is unfortunate because I had it highlighted red, sort of what I was hoping to deliberate on. So in lieu of that. I'm just gonna kind of. Point out the things I'd like to ask the community to liberate on, so number five, maximum height of an accessory dwelling unit. Show currently is drafted to not exceed the height of the primary structure. And not be limited to ground floor only, and I just wanted to see if you wanted to deliberate on that.
I, I like, before we do that, I'd like to know why we're doing.
I was just about to ask that, why aren't we doing? Why are we doing it?
Catalyst to this, because this is contrary to what we've always done.
Absolutely right. Why?
Where did this come from?
Yeah, for what it's worth, I think it's clear that we have a housing issue, and this is one way. That we can attempt to address that while also having design standards. You know, accordingly. That preserve the character of these neighborhoods, I mean, we're seeing. A ton of multi-generational households, and this is one way that we can potentially channel that growth. Without having to deal with negative consequences later.
Well, there will be negative consequences later.
Like what?
Because you're gonna, your people can, will convert. Houses under this, and then they'll all become illegal apartments, all of them.
Yeah, because just because you say it's for family members only, guaranteed, once mom and dad move out.
Guaranteed.
It's gonna be turned into an apartment, a rented apartment.
So I could drive, I could drive you right now to, to one where there somebody's living in a travel trail. And you know where it is. They're, they're living right, they're living right, they're living right in it. And I could tell you now that. As bad of an idea as it is. An existing residence, having it as a second. As a second structure, and it's a cabin structure, I can't see any good coming out of it.
A good idea in concept, but I'm not sure.
I think in practice, it's gonna become a slum.
It's fairly common in, in a lot of places, I mean, Alex, you've done extensive research on this.
It also exists in Paradise Township currently as a use, and as nearly as I could tell during Paradise Township, it's not being used. Um, it's also in a number of municipalities in Chester County, which is. The most affluent county in the Commonwealth, and. It passes their. Tests for their concerns about maintaining the, you know. Property values and the character of the community, a lot of these standards I can keep from Chester County municipalities. Not every municipality in the Commonwealth has, this is definitely sort of a new direction, but enough of them have it so that I do feel confident that's been. That if you word this, these standards correctly, you can prevent situations like that from happening. And, you know. You have, if the board wishes to proceed in this direction, we can explore that in more detail to try to figure out, you know, how to do that. I'm not a real estate agent, I don't understand exactly how to do it, but, but if we brought in, you know. I'm not a housing expert, but I do have experience in affordable housing, and I have to agree with Jacob that there is a significant need to cater to. Extended families, in my personal opinion. And that as long as you word it right, and you restrict it to family members only, and have a way to prevent, you know, once the family members move out. Somebody that doesn't meet those definitions from moving in. It might help, who's gonna police that? Right?
For what it's worth, I don't think it's necessary to, to have that delineated family line, I know that it's hard to. The initiative here, at least the, the research, but. I don't see why these couldn't be rented out in some form.
Los Angeles just passed an ordinance. For allowing this all over the city.
Oh, that's where we want to be, is Los Angeles.
Yeah, we wanna.
Well, this one obviously.
He just turned everything into a duplex, basically, to give.
You know.
I mean, there are existing non-conforming. Buildings all over the place that do this, my house included is one of them.
Yeah, but it was before the zoning.
I'm highlighting, I don't necessarily agree with this either, by the way. Because I'm worried about the enforcement. I'm worried about what it could look like. Um, I do think the idea that someone can have a. You know, it doesn't have to be the LA thing, but someone can have a small little. One bedroom in the back of their house that they rent out, um, I actually think it's actually, it's not a bad thing, I think it exists all over the country. But I don't know how you do it right, so that you don't have it be. You know. They are too everywhere.
There have, there's a, there's. About a minimum size of four hundred, five hundred square feet, but what's the maximum size? What if you put in a five thousand square foot four bedroom?
Well, that's why the, the. Can't be more than the square footage of the primary.
Okay, yeah, it's a standard number nine, and that was one of the items I wanted to bring before the community see. You can set the maximum habitable, habitable floor area, so in all municipalities set it. A minimum of like four or five hundred square feet and a maximum of like nine hundred. That way it's diminutive to the.
If you're not gonna get, cause you're asking for a kitchen and bathroom and all that, you're not gonna get that at five hundred square feet. The minimum you need to put bedroom. Laundry, a kitchen, a living room is about eight hundred.
Yeah, eight hundred to a thousand square.
Thirty, thirty by thirty, thirty two by thirty two.
I mean, for me personally, I, I. I feel fortunate that I live in the house that I do, because my son, who has autism. And I do not believe will ever be able to live a hundred percent independently, my goal is for him to be able to live in my back cottage.
But your cottage exists.
I understand that, but I'm basically, but I'm also in a position where I can enable other people to have a similar situation, I'm saying, no, you can't. I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm playing devil's advocate a little bit here, in that I think it's not a terrible concept, but I, I. I also, I have a lot of concerns that it would be abuse, and you don't want to basically turn our ones into our twos.
I think we should call this. The Save America Amendment. You know.
The doghouse becomes a.
May I, may I contribute just a sketch here?
Yes.
Well, uh, there are a number that I can think of, I could take it to. A number of houses that are single family dwellings. That have more than one family living in them. And they've doubled up on the kitchen space. There are a lot of basements that have been converted to. Apartments, if you will, and those apartments are, are they being rented? I don't, no one knows, and I asked once, I asked Ken. To look into that, because there are, I, I, I. Guided him to at least one, and there were several. And he said, what am I supposed to do, find out what they? What they charge the person to live there and what their names are, and why? It will, wouldn't one have to do that if we were investigating this, if we were trying to eliminate? All but single family residences, which is the way it's owned. What does that mean, what is a family, and we, we confront, we, we discussed that, as I recall, Robert, not too long ago.
Well, we defined it, and I think when we outlawed. I have Airbnbs, because we had to define what a family was.
And is that where we came up with consanguinity?
No, that's different, that just means degree of relationship.
Yeah, so that, a lot of these standards are from Chester County municipalities, and I liked those, that language specifically, because it does. Restrict it, right, and then, you know, theoretically, we could do more research, I could reach out to those municipalities and ask them. How exactly do you enforce this, and get some feedback from them, and get some guidance on what has, because they've had this adopted for some time in those areas, and. You know, it, it's, it's certainly not something that, okay, let's go ahead and. You know, advertise this for, this is just a discussion for deliberation. So I can gather your concerns and get a gauge on whether or not the community. And then, then the board would like to proceed with this, and if they do, maybe there's, I, I expected a lot of concerns and further research needed here. So I mean, this wasn't intended to be the, the final deliberation.
I think there's a number of ways that this could be tightened up, and I think the name is brought, you know, good ideas to, to discuss. You know, I, I think, without fear mongering, I think it makes sense to provide situations, you know. Flexibility, like Michael talked about.
Right.
You know, it, it could help a lot of people, this, this already exists in a lot of ways, I don't think we currently maintain. Any list of the rentals or anything, like you've seen a number of boroughs have landlord registration and things like that. I don't know of a ton of townships that do that, but that's an option. You know, to maintain this type of thing, and then there's penalties for not being registered, et cetera, but I think that. You know, at least some of this is, is reasonable.
You're, you're, you're throwing more things out that need to be enforced, and we're not even doing that now, so this is a problem. To, to say that we're going to enforce this, because we're not even doing what we have.
I would disagree in part and agree in part. I think there's been some changes that have led to better enforcement. Over the last six months than perhaps in, in the rest of the last few years. I can absolutely, I would, I, really, we've sent out more enforcement notices in the last. Six months than.
Yeah, we've sent out more enforcement notices in the last five months since Diana has been here than I. Think for the last two years.
And what, what are these enforcement notices?
Uh, they vary from somebody who's not allowed to have a rooster on their property to residential businesses. Or excuse me, businesses operating in illegal residential zones to. People constructing illegal decks on their property, um, it varies case by case.
That's good to hear.
And there's plenty of pending court dates, so we're very optimistic.
Yeah.
So.
I think, I think this one might. While I agree with, I actually agree with the idea, and I could picture it being cute and quaint and having it there, and I can picture a wealthy neighborhood that has little cottages in the back with in-laws and. I don't know that that's what we'll get in this community, we will not, I, I.
Cause it has up the road for me, it's got a dozen cars in it.
Yeah.
There you go, it's literally right up the road for me.
We got them too.
Uh, and I just wonder, I mean, we're making incredible strides on, I, I think, on our enforcement, and I think. Maybe this is one we revisit in a year.
I don't see any reason to not get more information and consider it in some limited form, it doesn't necessarily need to be an R one, but. You know. You're an R one, I mean, that. We talked about how great these existing non-conformities are, and then we talk about how we shouldn't let other people do that, cause, cause it doesn't, you know. My status will change, or I, I think that there's a lot of things that. Are going to evolve particularly on the enforcement end of things. Which will result in improvement, we've talked for a long time also about light standards, but we can't pursue every single ordinance at the same. Time, although I think. This is something that when you have design standards, it molds and shapes what's going to happen.
There's another, by the way, another thought on this that prevents some of, of what we're saying, which is. Not just the minimum size of a lot, but the distance between structures, because if technically the two structures. Could theoretically be subdivided by our, our ordinances, they would be allowed anyway. So like actually my cottage in the back, I could actually subdivide it, and then it would be conforming, because I've got forty feet between the two of them, and then I'd be conforming.
Yeah, but not the way.
But I'm not doing it for one reason, that's my taxes will go up, so it doesn't make sense for me to do it, all I'm saying is, if there was a requirement that buildings had to be forty feet apart, and all these requirements that would otherwise. Basically just mean you subdivide. Then you're, you could have that anyway.
You provided it had its own utilities.
Well, yeah, that's true, actually.
Yeah, so I guess what I'd like to think about for a second here is, what, what?
But it keeps with, I'm sorry, what it means it also keeps the character, in terms of the look, it's gonna be the same one way or the other.
I guess in the big picture is what do we want our township to look like? And, and by doing this. We could have a vision in our mind of like, as Michael said, are you a cute, cute little cottage off to the left, and. You know, it's all nice and dandy, and you know, my grandma and grandpa lived there, but it will evolve. Into much more than that. And it changes the whole character of our neighborhood. So we need to have this thing extremely tight to not allow that. Extremely tight. And limited to a really narrow margin of what is allowed. Or we're gonna change the character of our township dramatically, where we're gonna have fifteen, twenty cars in a, in a. One wing to five acre lot. And it's not, it's not gonna be a good situation.
I don't think anyone wants to fundamentally change the character, but I think that it does address a, a real. Issue and limited the way that you described and maybe talk about with. Utilities and other standards, they don't necessarily have to offer full on. You know. Kitchening and, and, and.
Are ADUs not allowed in R two, so? It must be allowed in R two.
ADUs don't exist.
I mean, something similar, because in an R two, it makes more sense, R two is. Is dense, commercial.
Uh, R two would allow duplexes, was what this would allow. Right, so if you wanna destroy the R two, R one zone, you do this.
Yeah, I, I would.
That's your interpretation, I don't think it.
That's what happens, that's actually what happens.
It's gonna happen.
Go right here, this, go to that one. If you drive by it every day, I know you do. You know which house that is.
Yes.
That's but a de facto apartment house. And now you want to bless it, that's what that is.
Not a bad blessing, that, look. There's a lot of different things that, that people do that maybe aren't correct, or. Yeah. You know, that one house could be one of those examples. I haven't investigated myself, I, I knew some of the people years ago, I don't know if it's the same people, but. I think that, you know, looking at the idea. You know, itself is, is not a terrible thing, and I think that. In a lot of ways, our township is. It's stagnant in the sense that. You, you already have to have considerable means if you want to be here. Or if you want to stay here.
Okay, but that's why people, that's why people are here. These are the people that are here, do you want to turn it into LA?
No, no, we're not talking about turning it into LA, we're a township of eight thousand people, twenty four square miles, there's no chance we'll be LA. But people.
So what, what, you obviously are favored, that you're pushing real hard, what is your, and what do you?
You know. I think uninformed stance, I think that. The idea that this will suddenly destroy our township is unfounded, I think that in some ways. You need to have more diverse forms of housing. Because if, if the median home sale in the county is like three hundred thousand dollars right now.
Yeah, we also have Ivy Ridge, and we have Milby Com.
We have two communities that offer that type of affordable housing, it's not as affordable as it used to be, I think it's a considerable thing, if we want our kids. To want to stay here, cause I. Almost none of my class of twenty eighteen from East Charlotte South stayed here, even less from ESU. You know, and it last year. I worry about that, because I think that we're going to become a place where no one new can come in without having. Significant means of people that are generally already well established. I worry that if we lose the people that grew up here. We're going to have people that move here for that, yes, but then are subtly. But surely pushing other people that want to be here out.
Jacob, I got something for you to worry about. Uh, and it's, and it should be on the list above what we're talking about here. And that is, you mentioned the word blight. We, we have a blight problem on two oh nine, two oh nine, four forty seven. It's everywhere. And these are, these are dilapidated structures, these are structures that have been dilapidated and reclaimed. Into things like, oh, I don't know. The Marshals Creek Short Stay Inn. Which used to be called the Boom Motel, you've got, you've got these sorts of things that are, that are worse. By far in, in degrading the value of our community.
Agreed.
And you're already, and not to mention lights and signs. And you're already, and not to mention lights and signs. And everything else that we're trying to address. This thing belongs way down the list, if you ask me.
We're going in the wrong direction.
Yeah, this I this I would, I would, I would say table this thing.
Talking about this does not preclude us from steadily improving our enforcement. We've done a lot of things to get in a better position. I think just talking about this. Doesn't send us in the wrong direction.
Okay.
You know, I think we need to address the blight, and I think we've been working on that as well, dangerous structures, those sorts of things.
There should be a sense of urgency. Behind the blight issue. We need to, we need to address it because it is the first thing. As someone very close to me has said recently. When people come to look, when I, when a doctor and his wife. Come to to perhaps take a job at the at the medical center. And they look for a place to live, the wife says, I'm not living here. And I think that that happens all too often, and I'm not making it up. It's I've heard it said. Okay, I've heard that spoke. So. What we should be doing is improving, one of the reasons we did an ED zone, well, as you know, was to improve. The commercial corridors of the township to make them more aesthetically appealing. A livable, walkable, all that goods parkable, all those bad verbs.
And have apartments above them.
And and combined, right, mixed use, all that kind of stuff, right? And there's, there's one way to add to the uh. The housing deficit problem, whatever you call it. So, look. Seriously, I I think that this is well intended. And I think that Alex has done again a terrific job putting all the stuff together, because it gives us the the overall. Uh, picture. Of what we're going to be facing, or what we might might wanna face, but not now. Because there's stuff that really should be on the list well above this.
We also have a tremendous amount of housing that's coming up when they finish Smithville Gateway. That whole second, third, and fourth floor, that main building is gonna get. That's sort of a huge influx of heat.
Except so far, nobody wants to build it.
Well, it's gonna happen.
Do you have any insight into that, you guys, Robert? Has has?
So far, no takers.
And you can't build the residential until the commercial's been done.
Right.
Correct. And then will they be affordable?
But again, again, there's their high-end apartments, which means they're not.
Those are high-end and they're also specifically deeded right as. Basically, um. No children effectively.
A percentage.
Oh.
You can't really do that, but you can make it into.
I think forty percent.
But as as a very wise man once said, this is just a bait and switch.
That's a federal problem, so no children.
Well.
Yeah.
No, that was the intention because of school districts.
Okay.
And taxes and the fact that everyone's taxes would go.
Was that part of the way that they got that uh tax uh?
Tiff agreement between.
Yes, like by committing to only fifty five.
Not only. And they're only one and two bedroom.
So the accessory dwelling unit is only a separate building on the same property. It's not within your home.
Forty is within it as well.
Someone could finish off their basement.
Yeah, no, it has to be a separate entrance. They can have like a vestibule where there's like a hallway and a staircase or something like. Yeah, it would be, you could, you could either have attached or detached. You can have both. You can take ones. But how does that affect the taxes, you see, so?
You go through all this trouble building. Okay. It's it's gonna and there's a tax increase.
Any any improvement you do on your land will be assessed by the county and the county assessors will take a look at those improvements. And and yes, but like, as Michael said, it will be a lesser tax raise than if you had a fully separate property with a full. Single family dwelling unit.
With separate utilities, et cetera.
Yeah, if you if you. As soon as you have a separate property, sort of a baseline plus.
Right. You're saying that would be, will help for. People to stay here because. It'll be more affordable. How is that? I assume that's what what you're kinda saying, your 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 kids. And your friends, and so how is how is that gonna? Make it more affordable for them to stay here? Because you're saying they're separating the mortgage or the rent in that one unit with over multiple people?
It would, I can sort of answer that. So you, let's say you're fortunate enough to own property, which is not, I don't think. Well, let's just say you happen to be fortunate enough to own an acre more property, and you have a child who's eighteen years old and is. Saying, well, I can't afford to live here because rent is. A fifteen hundred dollars per utilities, and the parents would say, well, we're fortunate enough, have enough. We can, we can take out a building loan, or we have some, we can build this cottage for you, and it'll be rent free. And you can live, and you can live there now. You can save yourself that money, or you can help us pay back whatever it costs to build. You know what I mean? Those, that's just a bad example. That's a hypothetical. You know what I mean? So.
The slip side of that, for example, might be. Like, the the flip side of that might be if you are reaching the point where your elderly parents are struggling to function by themselves. And rather than putting them in a nursing facility or care home, you know, hey. We're gonna put an addition on our house, you know, you'll still have your own space. You can maintain, you know, the the respect of owning your own space. But we're here when you need us. So that's the flip side.
And that's very good. What Scott was saying is, that's that's fine. That's great, and the the autistic kid that uh. Michael, the autistic kid diversion I liked a lot. Because I'm going through the same thing right now with my sister-in-law and her baby, her kid who's now thirty seven or thirty five. And she's gonna need to do something. She's gonna go have to go somewhere. And they are struggling with that. That's a very hard go. And they can't, they're they're in New Jersey. They can't build a separate. House out behind their house. They don't have the room. So she's gotta go somewhere else, and that's a problem that parents of disabled children are having everywhere in this country. So I get it. But whether this solves that particular problem or not, I don't know. Um, and I don't think any of us know. And the thing about it, Julia, that you said, you took us right up to the point where. Grandma and grandpa are living out back. But when grandma and grandpa die. There's this dwelling. And what what becomes of it? And when the family that lives there sells the property with the separate dwelling, what becomes of it then?
Yeah.
And it and then that's when you get. You get rocked into this. Enforcement conundrum. And it it's gonna be a problem. It has been and it will be guaranteed.
Those are, those are concerns that have answers that I don't have at the tip of my finger right now. I can do, I can, that seems to be the, what you just articulated, I think. Is it seems to be the consensus of what the concern is, and and I can do research and find out exactly how to address that. And what, that that's, that's great feedback.
Especially if it exists in a place like Paradise Township. You know, it. It's not exactly known for for being the most open, but if there's a way to do things like that there.
In sick of time, can we table this and have Alex do some more research?
Yeah.
We can all think about it.
Yeah.
We have two more things to get through, and this is the easiest one.
Yeah, I guess just what's the shortest.
The other thing, the other thing to consider, Alex, is. To do your research is how it affects property badly.
Sure. The only other thing, that's a really good. Neighbors.
Okay.
The only thing I wanted to just clarify is. Hypothetically, the maximum floor area should be, minimum should be eight hundred square feet, maximum nine hundred.
Yeah, it calls for a hundred and twenty one rooms.
What's that?
Hundred and twenty square foot, one room, and additional rooms are seventy.
Yeah, I would, I would do some research on that. Okay.
Because there's options you don't necessarily need to. It has, you know. A room, you know, some storage, you don't necessarily need to. Kitchenettes or anything like that. I mean, there's multiple versions.
Yeah, there's a lot of versions out there. So that's good. That's good guidance. Thank you all for your deliberations, and I'll come back to the board.
Shall we say table for now?
Well, this is a joint, this is a work session. There's no.
Let's talk about some lighting then.
Lighting. Hey. So can I, just as an introduction. The whole idea was that we feel our ordinances as written, where which there's lots of lighting departments. Are limited to the. Land development. They're limited to Salvo, right? They're in land development. Um, and therefore they can be enforced exclusively on new projects.
Yes.
Um, or projects that have been. My understanding is, it can still be enforced if at some point in the zoning history of. That we have on file, and now it's more and more electronic, by the way. If at any point there was land development. That was approved by the township. That it got, what we already have can be enforced there. So we're exclusively talking about something that would be. In Salvo or in zoning?
Can I respond to that?
Yeah.
So I, so, okay, so I made one. Slight error, and I'm willing to admit it. So in the ZO, there are actually some lighting standards and criteria. In in supplementary lot yarding restrictions, six A through C, and then, but they're very minimal. Uh, and then. Planned unit developments and then incentivized developments have, again, minimal, but some standards do exist.
Okay.
And only the incentivized development options and I. Is that in the ED? That's, okay, so in that zone, there are actually some. Units for lights bill over, so it's it's point one light foot candle. So that in the ZO, that's all that I can find with regards to standards. In the in the Salvo, the standards are still quite limited. Um, i- in my opinion, and. Does that help answer your question?
Yeah, I just wanna make sure we're not getting ahead of ourselves of, oh, my God, we have these lighting problems. We need to create new ordinance, because there is some mechanisms. And I just wanna make sure we're not trying to solve an enforcement problem. We're actually wanting to solve an ordinance problem. Because I think there is also a enforcement issue currently as it relates to lighting. Um. And we are working on that. We have just purchased a, or we have a light meter, and there's a. A goal of training our zoning officer in that light meter and a plan to have someone deputized so that they can go out at night. Uh, to to, and we have now have a, I don't know if we've, Julia, have we received any. Lighting complaints since we've launched our new complaint form?
I haven't.
So this is good for the planning commission. Okay, this is good for the planning commission that like to bring up complaints a lot.
I mean, you want.
No, just fill one in. Start with one. Okay. Because that's how we're prioritizing enforcement.
Let's do it right now.
You go to the township website and then right underneath the banner, uh, under click on forms and documents and then scroll down. Uh, to the Cs and you'll see complaints for zoning, and that's where you can access.
And again, I don't know if this one is one that can be addressed, or if you're gonna do one on lighting. You can go for it, but ideally choose one that we know has had some land development, because I know those are, I believe those are enforcing.
Were they not? Yeah. It depends on what's written in your zoning ordinance. If it's written in Salvo. And it's one of the problems with your ordinance, in my opinion. Well, I wouldn't say problem. Your your zoning ordinance is kind of where your zoning officer can.
I know, hold on. My understanding.
Yeah.
So maybe I'm wrong.
Okay.
If there, if someone came for land development plan. Today. It gets approved with all the appropriate lighting. They put in the appropriate lighting. And then a year later, they decide to take all that lighting down and put back, hold on, I believe we can still enforce it. Is that not true?
I talked to your solicitor and engineer about that, and they indicated. I'm a little, a little fuzzy on that one, to be honest, whether that's.
Because that means they're in breach of their land development plan. The same, we, because we've enforced other things where someone's in breach of their land development plan. So it should be possible. It's just a question, is Ken doing it? Does he know that he can do it? So I just wanna make sure that let's not reinvent something that's already there. I do agree that we need it anyway for. Any case that's. That is. Out there that has not gone through any land development since our zoning has existed since nineteen, whatever, what was it, seventy fifty?
Thirty six or something, seventy six.
Seventy six. So any house that was born before seventy six that wants to put out massive lights, they can't do that. Um, so we do need this. I just wanna make sure we limit it to, we make sure it's.
Well, because right now, if your neighbor, for some reason, throws huge floodlights that go onto your property and interrupt, you know, your quality of life. Can't do anything about that because we don't require a land development plan for lights correctly, so. But there's no mechanism to enforce that.
But I guess I'm wondering, like, for instance, the the. The RV park across from Marts. That I've had a lighting issue with forever. They had a land development, and they went forward with it, and one of the requirements was that they fix that lighting. And so. I, and I distinctly remember the owner saying, we will do it. I know you have a big problem on lighting when I was on the planning convention. Um. And my understanding is we should be able to enforce that. So I don't know, Julia, if that's something we can look into. Um, getting on enforcement again, even before this gets into place, because it'll still be a few months.
It's a great question. You know, I I think it's a great question. It'd be great, in my opinion, it'd be great to get a solid answer on that.
Because otherwise, what is gonna stop anyone from doing any land development on anything, in stormwater, in anything? And then turn around next year and change it. And take their. Catchment area.
At least on on stormwater. Uh, we have mechanisms in place where if they are in violation, we have the ability to go do it and then. Lean or charge them in some form.
Michael, I would say that we are, you're, what you're saying is very logical, that we should be able to enforce that. But I think it's a question for Ron, you know, to nail down, so we can debate it all.
All right, let's talk, let's talk to Ron. I just want us to keep that in mind as we go over this, is that there probably are some things that. What gets enforced in Salvo? That's my piece. I think I still think we need this, though.
So where are we at with this lane?
Yeah, I wanted to give you an update. So I spoke to the Monro County Planning Commission because the, so just an update to the board supervisors. One of the reasons I requested this on the agenda is to kind of bring everyone up to speed on what's been happening in the planning commission, and I wrote up a memo here just to kind of let everyone know. And so basically, at this point, the planning commission moved to request technical assistance on an informal review and. Possibility of looking at a zoning overlay for what was proposed here. They did an informal review, but it was quite superficial, so I talked to them today on the phone. And they um had, they basically recommended looking at Kubal Township's um and and um. Standards and their zoning ordinance for lighting. And they also. Thought that Seeger Region had very good standards, and so instead of going all the way, they they said the model ordinance, the dark sky is great. But they would recommend possibly um backpedaling a little bit and saying, instead of just adopting that full model ordinance, once you look at Kubal. And look at Seeger of standards in the zoning ordinance, and then take what you like from the model ordinance, like the images of the full issue of the lights and. Like, for example, you know, there's, there's a lot of stuff we like from it.
That's what we were talking about last time.
Yeah, yeah. And so that's kind of their feedback, and I just wanted to um. There's other things like the definitions, you know, in our lighting ornament, in the model, there's image references, there's the possibility of adding. Light temperature, which I believe Kelvin, so that you don't have. You know, in addition to also, you know, the way you also regulate temperatures, you know, have bright lights, they're a little warmer.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
Whatever it is, it has to be something that. A zoning officer measurable can measure easily. And enforce, because if it's not, then the more detail that is on that front. The less enforcement they're gonna be, and we get nothing. So by going too detailed, we run the risk of of losing it all. So. We talked about this a lot with the with the nuisance, the noise nuisance ordinance is um. You know, simplify in some ways, I mean, light, light, what do they call bleeding or light um.
Yeah, we have bleeding.
Um, being number one, but I mean, what I'm reading here is draft standards. I think it's a lot, that's a lot, and that's fine if we have. That can enforce this, but I just. I also worry about someone that, you know, when it gets so complicated and someone. A hires a contractor to then put up the lights, they look at this, they're like, uh, no, I, this is probably fine. And then it's just gonna be more work for the township, that person that's getting important, supposed to making it something. Simple.
I I agree, and I I would. Kind of, perhaps that's why they recommended starting with Kubal, because they already have it there, and they have enforcement already, and it works, it works. Okay enough, and it's a, even if you were to adopt just Kubals with some of the great stuff from the model, and we really like. For the community, in my opinion, and consistent with other municipalities. So that's. My recommendation is to go in that direction as opposed to full model ordinance and.
So what is this right here that?
So what is this right here that?
That's full model, that's the full dark sky model ordinance and and what we were sort of cautioned against. Adopting that whole thing and and backpedaling a little bit and look at Kubal and and the Seager Region and and adopt their standards, which is. Um, so I wanted to just bring that before you all and see if you're, the other important thing I want to point out. Is that the planning commission um. Seager, so like Chestnut Hill. Yeah, so the other thing is that the planning commission decided that instead of inserting all these standards into the Salvo and the zoning and the enforcement chapter separately. Create a new chapter with those standards and then reference those to that chapter.
That was the, that was the, that was the graph I drew on the back of.
I think that's smart.
Of the agenda, that's, I think that's very smart. Because then, because then you can deal with your. Your uh, your your standards in one spot and they don't uh. Inadvertently over decades change in other places as you as you adjust the zoning and subdivision and it's standalone, so.
Julia, um. Can you take note of this as well? I something I want to make sure I don't forget. Um, a lot of our P R Ds. Or at least some of them, um, there are parts of the P R D that reference. Our zoning. Um, I just think it's important we make sure we know when that happens. Like, I I believe the, I know for a fact, actually, the. The Wyndham P R D um references signage um in our ordinance. Um, and I don't know whether that means it becomes grandfathered into the original signage. Um, I'm I'm sure it's not the new one. So every time we change and add a whole new section, we just have to be aware of that. Uh, because it'll get complicated down the line because they have loaded on and approved a set of. Conditions that then change and then it's hard to know what they're. Right. I don't know how we do that in a safe way. Maybe the software we're launching does that.
Oh, I think worth a while in any instance that.
Just to note on color temperature, it's really the difference between what you buy where it says indoor bulb or outdoor bulb. And um research. Recently has shown that. Outdoor lighting, which is really like sunlight, affects um tree growth, it's affects migrating birds. There's a lot of things because they don't know it, it's not night.
Yeah.
So that was, that was a reason for it.
Reproduction of frogs and toads and amphibians.
I was gonna say on the previous point, it might make sense since we know that. We we have contacts for almost all the HOAs because some of them are more or less defunct associations. But anytime there is a change. We can certainly have reciprocal agreement where when we change our ordinance that they may reference me.
Only when it's referenced already, I think.
What I think would be good probably for us, because I I'm sure it doesn't exist in the current record. We should have a copy of all of their existing declarations and whatnot. That way on file, we know when they 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 reference us and they can send us that and we can. Have that because you, you know, you're right. They often will just enforce our own stuff in their own.
Correct.
You know. Our own place to keep the character.
Oh, actually surprising, a lot of it are. Are similar, but like as per the. The township zoning. Okay. Um. So you're gonna look at Kubal? Hmm, make some edits and then bring that to us next time?
That sounds like a good point. Alex, we're gonna have a meeting at some point, right?
We were, that's a great point. So Scott and I had wanted to.
Cause I, I do it with you, absolutely.
So Monroe County Planning Commission offered to have a sit down meeting, so perhaps um with me and Scott since.
That's good.
So because the um planning commission was kind of lead on this and so. I'm trying to think of how to, this procedural standpoint, so I could put together a new draft based on their feedback and then do you want me to um. Bring it before the next work session or do you want to try to schedule a meeting?
I think you can schedule whenever you can. It's only going to be you and me for that initial of whether it happens before our next work session.
Okay.
Or, you know, or somewhere with our planning commission, whatever it is, that's fine.
Take volunteers whenever you can get them.
Yeah, really, yeah, right, take volunteers whenever you can get them. But I'll, but I'll do with you. So let's, let's see some times and you have my email on my phone or you have my cell too, right?
I do. So what I can do is draft up a, based on this conversation and the feedback, draft something up and then bring that to the planning commission, say, hey, what do you think? And then hopefully.
We'll do that way, absolutely.
And can you, Julia, can you have as an action step that we want to follow with Ron, just to understand?
Yep.
You know, is there a line whenever something happens in land development and when you can continue to enforce things? Okay, and and who does that? I assume it's zoning officer, but it might, it was. So the officer, because it was zoning, so it was, who deals with Salvo?
Pardon me, following up, who's going to follow up with Ron or who will do the enforcement once we've determined?
I want to know from Ron. As for the second, that's township code, who's supposed to be doing Salvo enforcement?
That would be a good question.
And we've we've stipulated in our township ordinance around nuisance, who does that?
Right. In general, it's the Code and Code's Enforcement Office.
Code's Enforcement, which is, which is also Ken.
Yes.
It doesn't have to be Ken.
And if it gets to a point like stormwater management, um, Ken is also our back for that, but that's also something that our engineers will inspect and.
Yeah.
Uh, and they will give like the letters and the comment letters saying, hey, you're going just wrong as far as that.
Our our engineering is actually our backup zoning officer.
It is easiest when it comes to conditional uses.
Codes enforcement officer system is really what you're looking towards. Versus what was the old zoning officer, you're you kind of will see them more of a, because the, because the code enforcement people can actually look at all of it together. Versus things that just come in under. Whatever our chapter twenty-seven or whatever it's for zoning, yeah.
It's a much more holistic approach that we've been.
Yeah.
Working on in in particular since having Diana here. It's been awesome and getting stuff out procedurally much faster. I mean, it's a good way to keep everything accountable.
All right, let's.
I was gonna say, yeah, I was gonna say, though, conditional uses, it's it's. Supremely using the zoning officer, yank one of those permits if someone violates the lighting conditions that would be established right on that.
Yeah, okay.
Why, you know where I am, Alex, let's do it.
Standards, lights, lights. Then we'll turn into a better time.
We've talked about, well, fortunately, we've had years of work on this. And with your feedback, and you kind of put with Robert and a lot of the rest of us have talked into. Ordinance form.
Yeah, yeah, I and and. And that's a really good point even. So I am sort of late to this conversation. I was tasked with, so I print, I printed out a copy of Eric. From the planning commission, his informal response, which we also provided to the planning commission. This is sort of what I was tasked with is incorporate. Eric's recommendations, which is he referenced Chestnut Hill Townships. Um, basically in the third paragraph, he stated that Chestnut Hill has a bunch, um. It's a good ordinance in general. I recommend taking a look at it for other standards and you you may want to put in yours like specifics for electronic message signs and bonuses for wood relief signs. And so I incorporated some new standards for electronic message signs. I incorporated other language, anything in this document that's underlined is from Chestnut Hill Township's ordinance. Anything that's not underlined is from the original document that I was provided. I also added. A bunch of images to go with the definitions.
He suggested that you add pictures, which you.
Correct, which you've done, yeah. And um. Yeah, so the current drafts, um. I did print out, this is something that I think is worth talking about. I was hoping to deliberate on a little bit as I printed out a copy of our existing standards in the zoning ordinance. And I want to try to get an idea of how much of our existing standards are part of the draft that I was given to to make this new draft dated five seven twenty-four. And everyone has a copy of, in the back of your packet is a copy of the existing standards.
That's, that's all that you have there.
Yeah, and I wanted to get an idea of twenty-three pages, how much of those are in this new draft exactly?
Yeah, because this is a complete rewrite, correct? Uh.
It, I.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Right now, wh- where are, what page?
So what we're, so the, so you have that document with the highlight on top and then printed out the existing standards in your zoning ordinance. And it said the one with sign regulations in the upper left, five oh four in chat. Right, and so. I I guess my, I, you know, so it sounds like it's a complete rewrite and I guess my question is, would it be easier? I guess, would it be easier? To simply amend the the very problematic sections of our existing standards? For example, if you want to repeal and replace certain sections that the board feels are highly contradictory, controversial. Um, like, for example, repeal all the outdated language language on externally and internally illuminated signage and replace it with updated language. Um, do you want to amend the definitions to be more consistent with the current draft?
Um, I think from my point of view on that question, I don't mind if it's just a whole rewrite. But I do want to understand, it's can be hard for me to do that when I'm going like this. To understand what are the major changes effectively, um. That's why I kind of like the idea of of red lines. Um, to existing, just because I can know, okay, we threw that out and now we have this, um. I mean, it just takes more time for me to read through both. It was like, wait, what did it say before? What? So maybe it's one of those things where we go through. I mean, I don't know who will know this, be like, okay, we didn't have that before, now we do, and that was always there, that's not new. Um, this is completely different. I don't know. I guess I can do that myself, but it's.
No, it it definitely is. I think the nice thing about this draft is it has much more. Modern definition.
Yeah, so far I like it.
And I think. The biggest issue, I mean, it it just incorporates everything that is more or less there, but. I think the biggest changes had to deal with. Outdated signs. We talked about, you know, things that are otherwise illegal. We've talked about that quite a bit.
Oh, don't make me take out my photos again.
There's, he's got plenty here.
So then my other question is, this is zoning, right?
Well, this is where I'm going to go next, but go ahead, you go first.
I think this should be taken out of zoning.
That's exactly, here's what I was about to say, because I have a, because I have a Smithfield Township's. Code ordinance is here from the, you know, the the E code three sixty website that we have. And there's standalone chapter called Chad, chapter nineteen, signs and billboards, and it simply says, see chapter twenty-seven zoning.
Right.
And if we, I think our better approach. Is to do as though we were doing lighting, which is to take it from there so that all of the signage stuff. Is in a standalone chapter, which can then, of course, be referenced by subdivision, by zoning and in standalone enforcement, it's a lot easier. To go tear the shredded flags out of the ground and done with them.
But how, can someone help me understand how it is by taking out a zone? I just don't.
Because you don't have to go through the zoning enforcement mechanism that is in. Uh, the municipal planning code in the same way. You don't have to issue a zoning citation that goes in front of the the zoning hearing board, so it's it is easier to.
Instead, you just issue the. Certification.
Exactly what we just did with.
I understand.
It's in that, it's in that sense, yes.
Um. Okay.
But I think that that might be, I think we're, I think we're all starting to speak the same language on that. Well, too, once we get a rubric, a construct. We can, we can use it to.
It doesn't change grandfathered now, right?
Oh, generally, nothing.
I just don't.
And it's called, they're called vested rights.
Vested rights, fine.
It does not.
It, I mean, the sound, we realize that's different because it's a new sound every time it's made.
You know, you can't, you're not going to be able to go back in and. And go over things that have already been permitted along before. Those things are in place. I mean, you're gonna, you're gonna have a concept of vested rights no matter what. Whether you call it vested rights, whether you call it collateral stopple in the legal parlance, you're gonna.
What about if someone? This is maybe trying to do a loophole for ourselves, but if you have a a lit sign.
Yeah.
A leaky sign in a window and we correct it so you can't have it a certain way. Um, and they turn their lights out for the night and then it turns back on. Can you enforce it because they haven't maintained their vested right?
No, because not, no, it's not conforming, because not conforming uses in in vested rights definitely have to be abandoned for a period of time.
Okay.
Not turned on at all.
What?
Uh, even. Even, yeah, they.
It's responsible with the resort status.
Yeah.
So how is that working for our our? Motorcycle and noise? Just asking.
Well, most of, I'm not.
The noise, they've been making noise for a while.
Okay.
And so now there's a nuisance ordinance and we're going to psych them.
Yeah, but that was never, but it was never, uh, it was never a a preexisting lawful use.
Correct. That aside. The the fact that it's now illegal, they're going to appeal and all that.
It's not that it's now illegal, it's that it was illegal before.
Okay, so it's, so the sound that was made is not vested.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
But yeah, signage, and I, I remember writing this.
What if they appeal and win?
They won't.
I remember writing this in. That's, I'm not sure how long ago, it's been a long time, but um, preexisting signs. Um, are allowed and they are the preexisting sign can uh. Um. Think repaint the site. Um, can uh. Uh, advertise something, it's a similar use, which is owned by the same company. Um, but if it, if the sign is uh, is solely used for a different use, then it would come under the new ordinance.
Also, if it's not a registered nonconformity. How does that impact that? Like, we think about, you know, these better signs, whatever, like, let's say someone's sign is all nice and then it gets shredded, it's.
My understanding, this guy's gonna know, that even if it's not registered, if if you then get cited and you appeal, you have to prove that it was there in form.
Yeah, right, that's all, is a rebuttable presumption, right?
Yeah, and if you have it, you can just hand it over and it's like, okay, but.
We have several signs along two oh nine that we can't do anything about them because they preexist them. Another thing that, I I mean, just to to remember what I did here is I pretty much followed the old ordinance. I tried to clean it up some and I tried to um modernize things, it just didn't work anymore. For instance, there's a whole section on. Um, on digital signs, which was just outdated. Because the technology has changed and the industry standards have changed and just didn't work and. Um, I'll check, try to think about.
Uh, one, yes, because I I haven't been through this, does this, do the rights follow the use or follow the zone? Um.
Oh, but I don't think these aren't specific to. So on besides, I mean, the nature of the.
References to zoning.
Yeah, there's a whole section on.
Yes.
I mean, yeah, this is the part that I'm a little fuzzy on because Chestnut Hill Township's ordinance have a whole section on standards for temporary signs and then. So if you look at page. Twenty-one. Section one and nine, there's a section that's called temporary signs of all districts. And then if you go to page twenty. Two, you start, you start to break it down into each district for temporary signs. And section twelve, it continues to break it down like that, which I. And and that's, so I'm. So it it it's a, it it's a fairly lengthy document and it's very detailed. And I wonder if maybe, maybe, I wonder if we could maybe just get a small working group. I think one of the members of the planning commission recommended. Like a small group, like two or three or four people that can do what Michael says, sort of redline the existing to propose so that there's more clarity on that. I might be a a way to kind of proceed in this direction.
Can I take you back on that?
Sure.
May I take you back on that? I I read both of these documents. And I spent an hour and a half yesterday with Alex. And the the current working draft that's highlighted, it's got a lot of holes in it. Uh, there's a lot of infuities, there's a lot of holes, and I think it it needs a lot of work. Um. And I'm not saying, and I I think it's difficult for this group right here to decide what goes in and what doesn't. I think what this group needs to do is say. You know, what, what do you want to see with signs? What's the purpose of this ordinance? We want to get rid of the.
The banners.
The banners and flags. We want to regulate. Nonconforming signs, we want to establish where signs are, how big they are, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Then you give it to a small group. To go and read four or five other ordinances from other towns to see what you like in each one of those. Take that, cut and paste, and create something that addresses all of your concerns and then present that.
I think that's what this was an attempt at.
But it was all done by Alex.
Well, he took.
Well, he took Chestnut, he took Chestnut Hill and what Robert did and created this.
Correct.
In addition to that, Julia sent, I want to say, ten to twenty other municipal signers. This then works for multiple.
But I don't know if that went into this.
Yes.
Uh, at the.
Keep it simple.
Keep it straightforward.
Yeah, I I think that's a better way of saying it, keeping it simple, keeping it straightforward. But if you have to have everything covered or. You're going to have problems. I mean, just as a quick example, there's something in here talks about monuments and plaques, all right?
Talks about what?
Monuments. All right, so does that mean, it it doesn't really define what it is or how big it is or where it can be. Does that mean? That somebody can go on Seven Ridge Road and put up. If somebody can go on Severn Ridge Road and put up.
I'm sorry, I need to pause you, my computer just died, I need about thirty seconds to open my board, it's already.
Yes, she's making minutes, what you say is very important.
Was she recording?
Yeah.
She's setting it up. She's that quick.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, she's, you know, she's got minutes, exactly, but she's she's preparing them, but it's, we're flying over there. I'm actually gonna.
The difference between a pylons or a shopping center sign and a monument is.
So not a monument, a memorial.
You're good, the container, I'll take paper notes until this.
So anyway, I'm not gonna go through, like I said, Alex saying we're doing this for an hour and a half, but in one case, and I don't remember where it was, it talked about memorials, memorial signs.
Yeah.
And it doesn't say where they can go, how big they can be, whatever, so I said, well, then that means I could. Go on Severn Bridge Road in the right way, construct a plywood sized sign instead of memory of my grandmother, who was a wonderful person, and so put it up. Cuz it doesn't say anything that you can't. That's an example of a hole in this ordinance. So I think uh what Alex started to say is, we get a group, a small group, to look at all these different ordinances. See the, see how they're somewhat similar and what the differences are, and take the best of all of them and say, this is what I wanna see in it. And hopefully that addresses what the board's concerns are.
Okay. I think our broad consensus is that as a standalone.
Oh, yeah.
Chapter is clearly, is clearly.
Well, I was trying to, uh, my question, I was trying to get another. Consensus or something required further deliberation, um cuz it's kind of holistic, and that is, our current zoning. Does have, I think it was changed at some point, that follows the use of the. Property versus the zone, and by that, I mean, if there is nonconforming. Buildings that are commercial and are residential, they're allowed to do, that's this says, allowed to do the same signage.
Right.
As a commercial property, by the way, we don't even talk about the word commercial because we have an economic development. Um as a zone, but just something to consider um. So, you know, as an example, I mean, I, cuz I know about it, the Gemma Keystone is a small restaurant. Or in a residential zone, and but because the site, it is allowed to have signs on its building. But if we kept it to R one, it would not allow, be allowed to have any signs unless you made some sort of provision to allow for.
It's preexisting, you're good.
All the way back to Martha's Tavern.
You're you're preexisting, but not if you take the sign down and you say you're not allowed to have signs in R one.
And I addressed it in the draft idea.
Today, today's signs are also have lights in them. So should it be part of, should it be incorporated and the lighting and the signs should be part of each other?
No, shiny illumination should be here, it should be in the sign.
Because they illuminate?
Yeah, that's a great question.
That's a really good question.
And reference it to the.
Maybe just reference the still to be developed signage ordinance.
The lighting.
It would have to be that way, but also, I mean, our current signage.
And then you can illuminate a lot of the.
Our current signage um does, you know, talk about illuminated versus.
Right.
Sorry, emitting versus illuminated, and what is allowed and what is not allowed, so certain places you can have.
Yeah.
And it's similar to us in the lighting ordinance.
Basically. Yeah, the interesting thing about the lighting ordinance drafts is there's nothing in there for signs, because I felt like, well, let's try to have signs. With lighting for signs and the sign ordinances and other light, that's kind of the project, I think.
Lighting is lighting and where wherever it comes down, it will be part of. But in the signage ordinance, sometimes different lighting is allowed in different zones.
Right, cuz I I think where you have commercial corridor that, you know, is not adjacent. You know, or like the the signage would be a little reason, it's not facing or disturbing residents. It doesn't, I mean, you don't want to disturb the road in any way, like we talked about. But you also don't, you know, necessarily need to curtail it as much as you would, you know, the light bleed if. You know, for example, like the Menisink, which is your one home, you know, right by, you know, behind that, so I think that there's a difference there.
Well, maybe to address Michael's consideration, if we have a non- a nonconforming conditional use type of a thing, where we present it on a case by case basis.
We give them the opportunity to register their nonconformities.
Correct, and and if they wanna put signs in it, it becomes a discretion of the supervisors, what's allowed, that way you don't have it. I think it's, I think, I think that makes more sense to keep it to zone, but then have a provision around. Nonconforming use. A a conditional use related to nonconforming uses.
Cuz you may not need a conditional use, you could, if it's a registered nonconformity as X use, cuz that would be taken when it's registered. Then you could, you would tie it to that, I wouldn't necessarily bring it to the board every single time.
I don't know how. Well, you're, we're getting into the weeds.
Yeah. But it was the whole.
I I, what I would suggest we do is uh the the these two boards. Tell this small committee what they want in the signs, that we want you to address nonconforming, we want you to address banners, we want you to address temporary signs. And it's almost laid out there, and let's let's put this committee together, subcommittee to do it. So we have a, we have a lighting committee. So who's gonna be on the the the?
Well, I'll do it cuz I've already got my head pretty deep into it.
Yeah, you're already into it too, right, yeah, okay. Who else, who else helped Dave?
I mean, I have been over this, the, not the new one, but I've been over the old one a hundred times. So I promise never to volunteer for anything ever again, but I guess I'll volunteer.
I would keep it to like literally three people.
Well, we're, we're, we're not forums, we're not anything, so we can, we'll do whatever, let's just work it out.
I'm just saying to keep it small.
Okay, just like three, just to sit down and share. Alright, so in that, with that consideration, I would like, you know, either Julia or Alex to send both of us, the two of us. Um suggested ordinances from other municipalities, can you just forward that, Julia, you already sent that email to the board supervisors, you know, whether it's. You sent like eight or nine ordinances.
Yeah, I can absolutely resell.
And just forward that to Dave. I have, I still have a flag in my inbox, it's something to do.
I I have a shame on me, I'm looking at the open township projects and I have not gotten the creating that. My apologies.
Um you don't need to apologize for something, no one asked.
Yeah, I mean, really, here, here.
It's alright, don't fall on a sword.
I'll work to get that as well.
I gotta go, cuz I agree, you know, with the sign, it's gonna be better.
Yeah. Alright, so.
That's a big part of life.
We agree by our next video, I was meeting, which is next week to pick up, let's say, a third or fourth person.
Cause of the flag, you know, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Perfect.
And and Julie and I will walk on the website.
Some public comment before we. Anybody?
I really want to, but I feel bad about the time, it's just people are having different plans.
Well, we have, well, we have to take public comments by law.
No, I'll make it real quick, I wanna jump back to the ABUs then, and again, say why I'm so glad that I'm not any one of these people. ABUs have become increasingly more popular in more and more areas of the country. We do have a housing crisis, not only in Smithfield Township, across our entire country. Private equity firms are gobbling up single family homes, and they're pricing people thousands. Jacob, I back you a hundred percent, our young people have nowhere friggin' to be in this kicking dissection, they can't afford it. I will use myself as an example, I don't know if you're referring to me, somebody with a trailer, I have my twenty three year old daughter. Who lived on her own, yeah. For two years, did great, somebody came in, bought her building, jacked her rent up through the roof, my daughter is enterprising, hardworking. She'll go out and get a second job, she's had three jobs at a time to pay her bills. My daughter could no longer afford to live in her apartment, so what did she do? She bought a trailer, it's registered, it's expect, it's inspected, and it's parked in my fucking driveway, woo. Um she keeps it neat as a pin, we have rules, she uses the bathroom and kitchen inside, but. While she's saving up for her next step, that's her only option. I would much rather have a cute little cottagey thing looking in my backyard than her. This is gonna become increasingly more important, it's gonna come up more and more and more, so. As much as, and Doug, I agree with you, there's a lot more stuff that takes priority, I get it, we have a lot, bigger, bigger fish to fry, I get it. But don't put this too far in the back burner, it's, it's gonna come back to us.
Mine's twenty three also. But you're gonna get, but you're gonna get more when you, but you're gonna get more when you sell a two family house than you do for a single one, cuz you're gonna have a rental income. Tell you right now, you're not doing anything in terms of making it affordable, you're taking your two hundred seventy nine thousand dollar house, you're making it three seventy.
Some more affordable to buy, but it becomes.
Am I wrong? No.
It does allow for families, it allows the nuclear family to come back into being, which is something that our country is sorely lacking. It helps young parents when when, they're called granny pods in a lot of areas of the country. You know, young families who can't afford daycare because they're priced out of that too, grandma and grandpa can live in the back and help out with childcare. It it makes your living more feasible, so that's my.
Uh while I'm in agreement with Christine, my concern would be, at the end of the day, as you were talking. Family sells that unit. Is it gonna be rented to to two separate families, how do you control that? How are you gonna control it with zoning, or not not just picking on the zoning, but I'm just saying in general, how are you gonna control it?
You have to build it in.
And I will say, by the way, to my my one thought I have, ten, when, when you live in a house and then you're renting the house behind it. Um that that tenant tends to be a better tenant than if you live in New York City and you're renting to someone.
Correct.
Here.
Absolutely.
So actually, having the owner be adjacent or even on the same property actually has a lot of controls, and that's one of the ways you can do it, so. Must be occupied by the owner, if there's a person rental living in the back, that's a huge way to control.
Similar to the B and Bs.
From it, yeah, from it being, you know, two apartments on one property, you have owner and it, the only income that can come is that person that lives in that front house.
That's true, but if that owner decides to buy another house. And doesn't tell you, how are you gonna know that, you know, I mean, it's it's.
Yeah, it becomes hard, it becomes owner, owner occupied.
That's why there's there's things like tenant registration, which arguably could be a thing in in general anyway.
It could be something that requires a permit, as opposed to being by right, it's a permitted, permitted use.
Yeah.
I mean, I have a son with disabilities too, so I understand that situation, so, and I agree with you, yes, a hundred percent, they need places to go, so, but. On the same token, I I just don't wanna be surprised down the road if it sells. And somebody comes in to buy it just for the equity and rents it both out.
It be, it needs a lot of safeguards to go through, which is why, yeah, I don't, it might be the shortest one right now.
Yeah.
But you wait and see, it'll end up being the longest one to make sure that it can be done.
Also, might be advantageous to see what other townships that have this, what problems they're experiencing.
Yeah.
How they're addressing them and how they're.
What they wish they had done.
Right.
Correct.
I couldn't, yeah, precisely.
I think that this.
He's gonna keep over the turds.
I think there's a lot of room to look at that, so. Let's uh.
Any other comments, Doug?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Michael, second one, I would call it favorite. Thanks, everyone.